All right, if everybody's ready, I will call the meeting at all. Everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is to swear in our councilmen, two councilmembers for their upcoming terms. Mr. Sears, would you and Alex Edge approach the front, please? And I will turn it over to...
All right. You got anybody who won't stand with you?
Stand up.
Yes.
That's my wife.
Come ahead. Now, somebody gonna take the steel butt up?
Mm-hmm.
The paper, I'll let you hold this. I'll let you put your left hand on there and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilman of this town, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the Town of Sharpsburg to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the town without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust of the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, self-evident.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will cut to it.
And also, Ms. Elizabeth Good?
Come ahead. I'll let you put your left hand there. You need to face him. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will truly and faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of this town, that I will support, defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the Town of Sharpsburg to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to be the best interest and welfare of the town without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that I am not the holder of any office or trust of the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state, which by the laws of the State of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, self-evident. Congratulations.
All right, I would just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Edge and Ms. Wood for running and volunteering and serving, and look forward to having you guys on council, and we're gonna do lots of good things together.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clerk, do we have a forum present?
We do.
Excellent. Since there is no public hearing this evening, we will go straight to the review and approval of the minutes for both December 6th and December 13th.
We doing them individually or together?
I think we can do them together.
Make a motion.
All right, Stan has the first.
I'll second.
All right, Elizabeth has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And that is for both the December 6th and December 13th minutes. First part of the new business that we have is our motion to amend the 2021 budget. Because the State of Georgia requires that we have a balanced budget, before we present the new budget to council, we have to amend, if needed, the previous year's budget. The 2021 budget will need to be re-appropriated by a total amount of $2,568. What this means, if you'll flip to the next page, our final budget from December 31st of '21, we had to reallocate the $2,500 from within one line item to the other. We did not exceed the $219,466 budget that we had, but we did go, say, for example, under advertising, if you look under the expense accounts, under line item 523300, you'll see that the approved budget was $2,000. The actual ending balance for the year ended up being $3,375. So we have to go back and amend the previous budget to that $3,375 amount. That doesn't mean that we spent beyond what we were allowed, we just spent more in that one line item. We didn't spend more overall, we just spent more in that one line item. So this is something that we do every year before we review and approve the previous budget. You can see, or before we approve the new budget, we have to amend the previous budget. You will also notice on the income side, on the left-hand side of your sheet, we received 132% of our revenue over the year. We projected it at $219,466. We actually received $289,635, which is roughly $70,000 over our projections. Then, on our expense account, and this is where our staff has shined, we don't really have a whole lot of control over the revenue that we receive, but we do have control over the money that we spent. And we only spent 89% of our budget of $219,000. So I'm gonna give tremendous kudos to staff and tell them thank you for their careful husbandry of our money. Instead of spending $219,000, we actually spent $196,000. So that overage, or I'm sorry, that underage of $23,000 will actually go back into our general account, which, if you look on the left-hand side of the paper, we have $413,000 in our general fund, which is our just general bank account, and then we have $148,000 in our SPOST, which is our special purpose local option sales tax 2019 bank balance, is $148,000. So, overall financially, we are in very good shape. We brought in more than we thought we would. We spent less than we said we would, and that money will go into future projects that'll be coming up in '22 and beyond. So, that is our budget recap, as well as the request to council to amend the budget by the amount of $2,568.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Elizabeth has the first.
I'll second.
All right, Alex has the second. Before I ask for the vote, do we have any other questions from council on the budget? All right, thank you. All right, so all in favor? Approved, thank you. One of the things that came up during our 150th celebration was that Line Creek created a specific brew, brewed a specific beer for Sharpsburg. It was a pre-prohibition lager, and they had a keg at Line Creek, they had a couple of kegs at Dixie Dogs, and the problem was, is the beer was so good, you could only buy one glass at a time. You couldn't buy a larger drinking vessel called a growler. So Brian Storey and I got to talking, and I said, "Brian, it'd be great if you could sell growlers." And so I asked Brad, and I said, "Brad, can Brian sell growlers?" And he said, "No, they can't, but if you change your alcohol ordinance, he can." And what a growler is, is just a larger, what, 32-ounce?
60. Well, I forgot, what did we say?
Did I exceed 64 ounces?
Not exceed 64.
So it is a, it is a single bottle that was not to exceed 64 ounces. It is sealed at the shop, and this will allow Brian to sell craft beer for home consumption out of his, out of his establishment. Given the fact that we are having 600 and something houses come up right outside of his business...
Which business?
Dixie Dogs.
Yeah.
Dixie Dogs. And it's, it's an opportunity for him to, to have a new product, it's an opportunity for him to bring more business to the town, and I'd like to put it before council that we adjust our alcohol ordinance to allow the selling of, and it's just, and it's just beer, it's not wine, it's not liquor, it's just beer that, that he can sell.
And it's craft beer?
And it's craft beer, yes.
And so it's not, you can't just put a keg up middle of the light and then fill up the ground.
And this will, if we go and pass this, or if we have the first hearing tonight, and the second hearing next month, this will allow him to incorporate this into the redesign of his space, which he is hoping to do sometime in the second, I think in the second quarter of '22.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing you would add would be the license fee.
Okay.
I think what I pointed out is that most of your packaged sales are your on-premise consumption for beer and wine, I forget exactly what it is, but the Sonoy ordinance has a $1,500 flat fee that includes, you know, any other sales of packaged beer and wine. Now, this one is on-premise consumption of beer and wine only also. And Newton does not permit on-premise consumption technically, but they do permit takeaway, so in a, in a special cup, that you can get less than that to take away, but you can't just sit in there in the establishment and drink. So theirs is $1,500 plus the $2.50 for the packaged sale, plus the $2.50 for, and I think in your beer and wine, on-premise, $3.50 or something. So, you know, I would recommend this is an additional sales thing, it's also addition, additional work for the town, because he'll have to apply and, and come up with the growler license to go along with this. So you might wanna think what you wanna put in there as a fee.
Does this, does this cover in-house and takeaway?
No, this is just...
Just to go?
This is just to go.
Okay, so you can't sit there and drink it?
Out of the growler, you can sit there and order a beer, a craft beer from him and drink it there, but the...
Oh, this is just for the size?
The 64-ounce?
Okay, I got you.
You can't drink out of that.
See, you can't. All right, let me, let me explain real quick. You've got two different license schemes. You've got your license scheme for your package sales. Okay, so that's like your grocery stores and your convenience stores here, where you buy your beer and wine in package, right? You also have on-premise consumption. Now, no one here has on-premise consumption for distilled spirits, and no ordinance that I've seen permit growlers where you've got distilled spirits, all right? So Sonoy's ordinance provides for that if you only have a beer and wine consumption license, you can do growlers with craft beers also, but not if you have distilled spirits. And so this ordinance is crafted that way. And the reason being, they don't want anybody to be tempted to, you know, get into the packaged sale business, because we did have it, the referendum failed here, where they take a bottle of whiskey and pour it in the growler and then seal the growler, and you walk out the door with it. So this is only for on-premise consumption of beer and wine, all right? So your ordinance fee for beer and wine on-premise consumption does not include this modified package, so that's what it is. It's a modified package where you're able to take, you know, in a package, in the growler, you're able to take it out of the store as a package sale.
So a business owner's paying a separate licensing fee?
Separate licensing fee to that.
Yeah, for more growers.
So I would, you know, because of the way Newton's is set up, which is entirely different than this, I would recommend, I think, at least to charge the fee that you're charging for packaged sales of beer and wine at, say, the convenience store. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that I would recommend you go all the way to $1,500, because we have, as you know, we have, all of us, I say all of us, a lot of jurisdictions have cut back because of the COVID on what they're charging anyway, so...
I think that's fair.
Keeping it at 350?
Is that what I think is the policy?
I believe it's 350.
300 or 350?
300, 350.
Maybe 350. For the on-premise now, which is different.
I just don't have it in front of me, but I seem to think, I know it's in the neighborhood, 300, 350.
So does this limit it to prepackaged growlers, as in they already have to have it filled on the shelf, or you can walk in and say, "I want a growler," they can fill you one, seal it, send you out the door?
Yeah, they sell you a growler.
Yes.
And then you have your own growler.
But this doesn't, this doesn't say that they have to prepackage them before they sell, they, this says an employee can fill, fill it at your request.
Yes, he's talking about walking in with the growler.
No, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a prepackaged growler.
Right. You wouldn't just walk in and get one off the shelf.
Yeah, you're assuming, like, I think, most of the ones that I've seen have a minimum of 12 to 16, and I think the one up on College Avenue may even have 24 different ones. Of course, you gotta keep in mind, they have to know what they sell and how fast they're gonna sell it as to what they're offering, because, of course, beer and keg will go flat over time, so they can't get caught. So I don't suspect that he's gonna initially at least try to offer 16 different craft growlers.
No, his, his option is just to put a handful of kegs, two or three kegs in there, and then see how it goes, and then as the demand increases, he would add additional taps on his walls over there.
Yeah. So does, do we need to take action on this tonight, or is this just the...
This will be, this is the first reading.
This will be the first reading, so if you wanna just say to forward the second reading to add whatever the normal beer and wine package, or beer package would be that's in the current ordinance.
And we can do that, and we can...
So it would, it would, I would recommend an additional fee, because it's an, it's an additional thing that clerk has to keep up with.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's a yearly fee, correct?
That's a yearly, yeah.
And there's no other motion or vote that we need to take on?
Well, yeah, we'll just adopt the ordinance as presented with that addition amendment of that.
Next month.
Well, I just made that motion today.
Go ahead and make that motion today. Do we wanna go ahead and verify, or can we just say that it is, matches the convenience store package sale?
Correct.
Okay. All right, if I can get a motion to accept the ordinances written with the addition of the, the beer package sale price, license price. All right, so Stan has the first.
I mean, we're accepting it without knowing for sure what the licensing fee is?
Well, we, yes, but we're gonna make sure that the license fee is equal to what it is, what the convenience store's making.
Okay, so we're accepting on the grounds that we would make it equal to our other licensing fee?
That we're gonna make it equal, yes. Yes. Yeah, 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 we're not gonna come back in and sticking at a higher price, we're gonna have it to match the convenience store price.
I'll second.
All right. Alex has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is Team Hungry and Mr. Jeff Flaven. As you guys will recall, last January, Mr. Flaven came to us and said, "We have an idea. We wanna put on a market, and we wanna invite people." And he is here to give us an update on '21 and then to put in a request for '22. So, Mr. Flaven? I will turn it over to you.
Well, since we started, we have had 81 vendors come to the Sharpsburg market, and of those, 91% are from Coeina County. And so, we also looked at that, seven of them are nonprofits, which we give a free boot to, and so, kinda went around the last three or four markets and said, you know, they don't really wanna share, "How much you make it?" It's kind of a, it's a kind of a hard thing to ask. And so, we have had people range from $1,800 per day to $200. And so, when we talked to a lot of people, what we found out is, on average, would be about $200 per vendor, per market. And so, we kinda crunched some numbers, and that means that a particular market, about $1,800, we're taking in. You times that by the number of months that we had, and I just timed 65 vendors, because some of them were like physical places where they want you to come in and become a member. If you crunch the numbers, what you have is, we probably took in about $156,000 over the last 13 markets. And so, we're bringing in money, we're bringing in people, we're having people start businesses because of this, and there's been great involvement with the community, they come in and they like what they're seeing. And so, we're really trying to just be able to say, "Hey, we wanna, we wanna do this again." And if you know, for every hundred dollars that's spent, if it stays in the community, $68 stays in the community, whereas they go to Walmart, only $43 stay in the community. So we're trying to keep things local, and we, you know, some of you have been there, it's been nothing but positive. And the key thing you gotta remember, Team Hungry willingly will do something if students are running. And though we may be in charge, the kids are running the entire thing. They do the planning, they do the every aspect of it, and so, they have been doing a great job, and we're finding great networking happening. We are trying to do what we call destination location, and that means on Saturday, the third Saturday every month, we want people to go, "Oh, yes, our destination is Sharpsburg." And so, we're really pushing that. And so, we have talked to our vendors, and our vendors for next year, and do you have any questions about the last couple of months? It's just been really, really positive. We've talked to our vendors, and they would rather us start in April than not March, because March is so wet and it's so, it just, it's, you know, you don't know what to expect. So we are asking, again, as a nonprofit organization, to come in and have y'all wave the fee for us, and we are planning on having every Thursday, Saturday of the month, except for December. We're gonna go back to December 10th, and we have the calendar, and we sat down, I don't know, seems like forever ago, and December 10th, which we'll do a night market again, and we'll have Santa Claus there. And the one thing that we're proposing is, in June and July, because of the heat, we're gonna do a night market from 4:00 to 8:00, instead of the middle of the heat. And so, we're gonna really try to push that. And April 16th would be our first time doing this. And we're also coordinating a motorcycle ride, that's a fundraiser, that's gonna start at East Coeina High School, and for helping with Ruby's and the, so you're gonna have a couple hundred motorcycles going through the town while the market's on, and then they'll end up back over at East Coeina High School, hoping that they'll come back over here also. And so, that's sort of the recap, and it's just, it's just been a positive thing. So again, I would like to request that the fees for renting of the property, if you waive, and then another reason to go to April is because with the new possible parking lot and everything, with rent, you don't ever know. And so, we're gonna go ahead and err on the, on the positive side, so that's really kinda all I have.
So, just like last year, the question before us is if council would like to waive the rental fees for the outside and for the inside on the third Saturday of each month. Typically, the, the price to rent the inside and outside...
Six hours is $200 without alcohol, $500 deposit, it can go from there if there is alcohol, which I would assume is not in this case, and then it just, it can rise from there.
So, we're, we are losing a very small amount, I think, of what we are getting, also in addition to the community service that we're providing, not only for the kids, but for the vendors. I don't know that there's any multiplier that we could do that would bring us, or bring our community roughly $120,000, $125,000. Certainly not the town getting $250 for the inside and $150 to another $200 for the outside.
Maybe, maybe if it's rented.
Maybe if it's rented. So, you know, we've had a good partnership, the communication has been excellent. All the work stays here, I just, I can't speak highly enough of Jeff and Lori and the kids that he brings to the table. Any other questions? Any other comments, Jeff?
The only thing is that the relationships we use here with high school and the town and the community, it seems to be growing, and there's more awareness of what's going on, and in the past, our kids have helped out, we've called, and it's only people we've helped out in the, in the community, and so, it's just bringing greater awareness for our kids.
Yeah.
So if council is open, if I can get a motion to waive the fees for Team Hungry for the 2022 market season?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Elizabeth has the first.
I'll second.
Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a recap of our 150th anniversary expenses. There is no action that needs to be taken by council, I just wanna make you guys aware that for the week of December 6th through December 13th, we celebrated the town's 150th birthday for a total cost of $3,255.31. I will say, out of that amount of money that we spent, the only two entities that were outside of Coeina County were the banners that we made and the Atlanta Braves. Everything else went to a Coeina County vendor, from the, the swag that we gave out, from the flyers that we used, from the supplies that we bought, everything was bought here. Council through either a, the '21 budget or direct authorizations authorized 27, I'm sorry, $2,773. So, staff did, staff, mayor and staff did go over a total of $332.55. That is up underneath the $500 spending allocation that I have, but I wanted to make you guys aware of all the, out of all the stuff that you authorized and all the stuff that we spent, we only went over $300. So, it, it's, and, and I'm gonna put that to staff, I mean, staff worked so hard and so long and did so many just little things to make that we could success. And from the media coverage and from the reactions and from the social media exposure that we got, it was just such a positive thing, and I'd like to, first off, thank staff and everybody that had a huge hand in it, because we couldn't have done it without them. And then council, I wanna thank you guys for the, the freedom and flexibility that you gave mayor and staff, because I couldn't have done it without you guys as well. So, like I said, there's no particular action that needs to be taken on this, it's just information for, for you guys. And we also, on the list, we have it broken out by what was authorized, what it was, what we did, and all the information's right there. Do we have any other questions from council? Any other questions from public so far? Okay. All right. Next thing on the agenda is an underground easement agreements, or I'm sorry, an easement agreement for Georgia Power. If you will flip to the fourth page down, they are looking to put underground service boxes along town property on the Triangle property, which is the piece of property between Tarrentine Road and 54 and Church Street directly across from the old Sharpsburg Baptist Church. Basically, what has happened is Pike Engineering has come out and they have done some surveys to begin to prepare to bury many of the Georgia Power overhead power lines. In order to, excuse me, in order to do that, they have to place junction boxes, some kind of switching boxes down there. And, and in order to do that, to put it on town property, they are offering an easement price of $7,500 to put the, the boxes on our property. We, I have met with them on site, it will not impact the site lines for the new sign or for any signs that we have on the Triangle property, because if you look where the boxes are gonna be placed, is this area right in here is kind of wooded, and so, the "Welcome to Sharpsburg" sign is, is about right... And so the "Welcome to Sharpsburg" sign is, is about right there. So where these boxes are will not block that sightline. And the money that we receive from Georgia Power for this, I would like to put towards new directional signage for gateway signs and then, uh, direction, uh, directional signage to downtown. Um, so that would be the purpose of the money that we receive from them. It, it seems pretty straightforward, the one thing that Brad has recommended is that we add the maximum size of the boxes that Georgia Power can put in place. Um, in talking with them, one box is three by three by three. The other one is three by two by 18. So one is just a, a, a square and then one is a long skinny rectangle flipped up on its side. And you've seen them, it's the, it's the, it's the green boxes that, that they have just in different places. And so they want to put two of those at the intersection of Tarrentine and 154, on the town's property.
Tarrentine and 54?
Tarrentine and 54.
Yeah.
You said 154.
Yeah, you said 154.
Did I say 154?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I meant 54. It's the other end of Tarrentine.
How, uh, how long are they looking to put the tape?
Um, actually, they are, they, they, they are kind of ready to go. Um, they would like to have them in in February.
Wow.
Now that fee has a one-time fee, that's...
Yes, mm-hmm. Yeah, I asked if we could get that yearly and I just kind of got a little bit of a, a side eye look from the guy, but I thought, at least I'm gonna try.
You know, say no.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So I need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
All right.
I'll second.
So Stan has the first, Elizabeth has the second, all in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, all right, so... Yeah, sure, absolutely.
That, is that in preparation for the roundabout this going in, they're gonna start burying, is that gonna interfere with any of that?
It will not. The, um, burying of the underground lines is an initiative that Georgia Power has been, has been investing in the area for about the last two or three years, and they are making a concerted effort to bury as many lines as possible all around the state. They're gonna be doing it i- in several places, in the Sharpsburg area and then the greater Sharpsburg area. Because if you gone out there and seen the pink markings on the road, that's what it is. And it's just to, 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 to do better service, you know, we had, we were talking about this earlier. When the wind blows, the power goes out around here. It's gotten better now that they've buried it in downtown Sharpsburg. But of course, in Wellsburg, I, I heard you say that if it blows, it goes out. So hopefully this will alleviate some of that.
Should help.
All right, the only...
Good job of you getting them up to $7,500 on that.
Thank you, yeah, we, uh... Yeah, we had some, um, we had a little bit of back and forth on it, and it, it, it's gonna work out well for the town, I think. Uh, so that concludes our new business. Um, going on to the old business, we have our 2022 budget resolution. And this is the budget that we reviewed in December. Um, actually, we, we looked at it originally in, in November, uh, reviewed it officially in December on the 6th. And then this will be the second reading that will put this budget into effect for 2022. Our charter says that we have to have our new budget in within 30 days of the end of the previous fiscal year. So we literally, we technically have until January, February to, to approve this, but we always like to bring it to council the first meeting in January. What this does is this takes our budget from the 219 that was proposed last year and bumps it to $260,000, 10260, $131,000. And the largest driver in this budget, as I said before, is personnel. We have, uh, personnel money in there for a town administrator position, which is that the clerk, the clerk's position will transition to. Then that gives us a deputy clerk, a part-time deputy clerk, a part-time librarian, and a very part-time community center coordinator. And Alex, I'll give you the breakdowns of what those different positions pay. But as you can see, the largest single line item on the expenditures is our personnel services, uh, for $99,000. But that gives us four, five, four or five employees. Um, one of the things that we did differently this year in, um, filling some of the personnel is we took our lawn care and roadside trimming dollars, which we paid to a private contractor and brought that internal for our new public works position, which has been posted. So the largest expense within this budget is our people, and which is where it should be, in, in a town of this size.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, Elizabeth has a motion, or has the first.
So the public works is included in the personnel services?
Is in the 99, mm-hmm. The public works position is 20 hours a week at a pay range between, I think I put 15 to 19 on the, on the, um, job listing, but we have roughly $20,000. There was $11,000 in roadside trimming and then $9,000 in lawn care. And you can see those numbers on the previous budgets if you went back and looked at those particular line items. But instead of adding, we just reallocated that money from those two line items to personnel. So that way it's more reallocating rather than adding more money to the, to the expenditures.
And that, uh, position, they'll be bringing their own equipment?
No, no, we, no, we will have to buy equipment.
We have to buy the equipment.
We will have to buy the equipment, yes. But those are, are smaller purchases that I think we will be able to do one or two or three at a time. There's also some leasing programs that we could go through with GMA that would drive the price lower. Um, or there's other options to buy to where the equipment hit won't be quite as hard. Now, it'll, I know, I'll be honest, guys, this, like, everybody, it's probably gonna be five to 10 grand in equipment costs. But if, but when we have someone that we can say, hey, can you go out and do this? I mean, almost immediately, that's just gonna make ourselves so much more responsive. It's gonna make things look better because in addition to doing the grass cutting and right-of-way trimming, they'll be working in here, you know, they'll be patching and painting. And we go to refresh the exterior of the community. Hopefully, they can do a good bit of that work and then they will coordinate whatever they can't do. Um, this position, I would not expect them to replace the AC unit, but I would expect them to do the things like change the filters, and if a capacitor is poofed out, then they can go in and replace that. But stuff that they can't do or aren't licensed for, they can supervise or coordinate.
And where would you, when, if they coordinate something like an exterior renovation?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't, like, $15, $19 per hour is probably not gonna cover that subbed out to someone who's licensed and experienced.
Um, no, it won't. All, all the, all that I would expect them to do in that case is to organize it, follow up with it, and make sure that the work is done.
And then we'll pay for it separately.
Yes, and we have that, um, so those expenses are gonna be contained within repairs and maintenance. So we have $10,000 allocated to the community center for repairs and maintenance. Or to the municipal complex, it's not specifically just the community center.
Got you.
But yeah, those, that money would come out of, of a different line item.
I mean, I, I haven't seen, um, the contractors we were using before around town. What type of equipment are we talking, like, when we say roadside trimming, are we, is that like a guy with a weed eater?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Weed eater, lawnmower.
Weed eater, lawnmower, blower.
So standard, almost like residential level, uh, equipment, is what we're looking at, landscape equipment?
Probably, probably a step above.
We're not buying a tractor or anything, you know, okay.
No, it's probably gonna be one of those stand-ups.
Yeah, like a zero-turn, uh, ride behind, maybe a weed eater, leak blower, that type of stuff, okay, okay.
Have you had any interest in that position?
Um, I have put it out on the website, we've only got one resume in, but we haven't really been pushing a whole, whole while.
My question is, if for some reason we are not able to fill that immediately, then this work needs to be done. Will that money come out of whatever it was budgeted for the pay there?
It can, but it's gonna take a, a reallocation amendment, just like we did tonight. We'll do that at the end of the year to reallocate that. But I'll come to you guys and say, hey, you know, we haven't hired him yet, I need to do this, this, and this, just so you guys know. But yes, we can reallocate that.
And as I said, if we don't get that position filled, will some details come out in the coming?
Um, that, that... Uh, I haven't asked that question, but I know that we could talk with the county about getting a walk crew to do specific things. I don't think that the county would have much of an appetite for it to be a regular, continuous thing, but I think once or twice they could certainly help us out if we needed it.
How much money are we saving? I have to go back and look at the, I mean, how much money do we, how much money do you anticipate that we're saving, switching to a public work person?
Um, it's not gonna be so much saving dollar amounts, it's gonna be getting more work out.
Expanding what they're...
Expanding the duties.
Yeah.
Because when, if we're looking at 20 hours a week, my mental picture had been five hours of, of, of right-of-way, five hours of grass cutting, five hours of maintenance inside, five hours of maintenance outside, and then an extra five hours for just in case something happens. And then that'll give us weekly, and, and, and that's every week, that's not just once a month, because they were cutting about twice a month, I think, is, is, is when they were cutting. But by having this person on staff weekly, we're gonna be able to start catching up on a lot of the little things. Because if something breaks now, they either call him or they call me.
Right.
And that's okay, but you know, at this point, let's go ahead and find someone else that we can, that I can call to help as well.
Now, motion out here?
Yep.
I'll say it.
Elizabeth has the first, Stan has the second. And before I ask for a vote, do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions in the public? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, um, that being the new business before council and concluding old business before council, do we have any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Polly.
Ms. Jane has another question.
Okay.
Long time ago, and I think Tom was the person that was bringing this up, when they were talking about doing the, um, back parking lot, talking about making a walking area for people that would like to walk.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, well, anyway, then lately came up, sidewalks come up from time to time.
Mm-hmm.
Then I got to, was at another meeting and Link, that they're doing through the county was brought up. Can we get involved with that in any way, shape, or form, or how does that work? Does it have to be already connected, like a Jason, or how does that work? So we could get someplace where people can safely get outside, children on bicycles, skates, and old people walking.
So the, the, the short answer is yes.
Yes, come on, man.
The short answer is yes, we can get involved with, with an area to create a safe space for people to walk. Question is, is, is how and where would we do that? We have a couple of options. Um, we, council, other than the walking path that's gonna circle the park and, and, and park and parking lot, we don't have any plans for lots of sidewalks or lots of walking space. But yes, if council wanted to, we could start figuring out a route or a path and seeing if they wanted to bring the link down here. Now, it's gonna be a pretty far pull, that's gonna probably be a much later phase. But I'm certainly open to finding a way to connect to the link. I think council would if the numbers and, and projects made sense. But we don't have anything on our agenda for a dedicated, other than what's out here, a dedicated walking biking path, like what I think you're talking about.
Well, how do you start it? How do you get involved with it?
Um, we'd have to talk with Noonan and see where their plans are and, and, and what their projections are for the link, and then figure out how we're gonna get from the link over to Sharpsburg.
And is the link, the county, or you said...
The link is Noonan, that's Noonan, yes, ma'am.
Is it county, the county, the link thing?
Um, is all of the link in Noonan or some of it in the...
No, it's on Papa Road.
A part of Papa Road's in the city, it's on Laurel Fable.
Yep.
It's all around.
I hope it's in the city of Noonan. The county and the city have talked about doing it. The county is in favor of doing it. The county has just committed no resources to date to doing it. Uh, there is a master plan that the city put together that does include certain county properties, but does not extend all the way this far. To my knowledge, the county has not put together any type of master plan in the county. Now, they've been working on some other stuff, so it could be part of that, uh, other transportation stuff that they've been working on. I do know their plans, like, for this stuff that's going on for Laurel Fable Road, that's gonna carry it out, uh, to make it, quote, "link accessible," that sort of stuff, that's all part of it. Uh, but, uh, as far as any plans for the county on developing a path system in the county, I don't know where that stands.
Um, I can...
And the city's done it. I mean, theoretically, with, with the completion of this next part, the design phases started on the next piece, uh, that they're, or the pieces that they're considering, uh, but there's no money to do it. So I mean, it's, it's a question of, when's the next one, 2024, 2025? That, that any other phases the city would do would be in that. However, that being said, as you know, some of this COVID money and some of this other stuff, as they continue to change the rules, and then also as part of the, whatever they call it, the, the infrastructure plan, there's certain money, so, you know, if, if, if people have projects that are, you know, ready to go, there may be monies outside of the next splosh that could be used there.
Yep.
Well, because we just said, we kind of, some of it, the whole town is enclosed and made the highways. So there's nowhere except up and down the main streets to walk or do anything for children or adults or anybody. I just think it needs to get on the agenda somehow.
So one of the things that, that I would like to bring to council at some point in '22 is to be, for us to begin planning a capital planning budget and capital, capital projects and things that we want to see done in town. And, and I think the walking trails or sidewalks or however you want to term it, is, is gonna be something that we need to do and should do. And, and finding a way to connect our neighborhoods, because this was one of the things I talked with Alex about. I'd love to connect Wellsburg Station to downtown Sharpsburg. And I think that we could do that if we could get just a couple of easements and had just a little bit of luck, twist and turn our way. If you look at the map, you can draw, you can draw a path from Wellsburg to downtown very easy. It's just a matter of getting everybody to the table and, and, and pulling. What were your other, you had?
That was it, I was just, just...
That was it?
Somewhere there needs to be something started.
Right.
Even if it's down the road, you don't start it in the 11th and 12th.
Exactly, yep. All right, any other public comments?
I got a question for Jeff. Um, you had said something about doing June and July, making an evening market, late afternoon evening market. I wouldn't extend that into August too, because August is probably our hottest month, or maybe three months of evening.
Yeah, we talked about that, with school being in session now, it's hard to get our help. Um, so it's definitely on the, on the table, but I know we just, we did discuss it.
And aren't, aren't they in charge also if we're gonna do entertainment, as it is?
Uh, yes, that, yeah, we can include entertainment, um, with them, or we can do entertainment separately. It doesn't have to necessarily be with them, and, and that's just gonna depend on their volume and, and...
Well, that's what we're trying to do also this year, and bringing, bringing, we're checking on the rulings with the agricultural department, bringing in fruits and vegetables, there's certain things that you gotta say, certain ways you gotta phrase it, or it's not fall under the Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
We're trying to do that for the market, so that you can have healthy food here, which coaches are owns and operates.
Okay, excellent, that'd be great. All right, any other public comments? All right, so we will start, the next thing is gonna be polling the council. I will start down on the far end stand. Do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything, just wanna welcome Alex to the council.
Thank you.
All right, Alex, do you have anything?
Uh, what, what's your name again, sir?
Jeff.
Jeff, I had, wanna ask Jeff a quick question. Have we, I feel like we talked about this at a meeting last year, maybe in the steering committee, somewhere where we crossed that. Have you, have we talked anymore about, uh, is there any interest maybe in creating, uh, like a, I mean, I know we'd have to coordinate with the business owner here, but creating like a street market, maybe one market per year, uh, or even in the night markets, uh, where we could use some of the street and sidewalk space, maybe even close off our main street. And, uh, I mean, I know the town doesn't have a lot to offer in terms of businesses to go in and out of and visit, but, uh, maybe using some of that space and kind of closing off Main Street and making the market sort of feel like it takes up the whole downtown.
We'd absolutely discuss that, it will depend on the number of vendors. We're looking at, if we're running 40, uh, we think that 40 would be worth it. And it'll also depend on how the new layout is here, but, yeah, we've definitely... And it'll also depend on how the new layout is here, but yeah, we've definitely set out and discussed it. Music and a couple more, food trucks, yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, we almost had it in, what was it, June, or June that we almost had it? And it just came down to just, we didn't want to have gaps in space up there. But we actually have a very, we could do it, so we used to block off all four corners and would have everything, but one thing that we could do now is we could block it right here at the entrance to the community center and block it right here at Main and Tarrentine. And that way, traffic can still travel that way, but people can come down here and park and then walk up. And then there's also some other pass-through opportunities that we have coming from Arbor Valley coming through here, just to, just to make the in-and-outs easier. So we actually have a plan in place to roll out a, either a full or a half-street fare, and if we can just get, you know, a couple of things that follow our way, I think that we can definitely do that in twenty-two.
Okay. I think that'd be very cool.
Anything else?
Find me other comments.
Ms. Elizabeth, what you got?
No, same as Stan, just welcome Alex and.
All right.
Thank you all for coming out too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything for your clerk's minutes?
Just a quick update, we got all of the alcohol licenses renewed, all of the businesses have been notified to get their licenses renewed as well. Alex, also, congratulations, welcome, and can I just say, go dogs.
Go dogs.
Go dogs.
All right, so now we have the two-hour version. Now, there's a place.
Gotta go.
To where we'll be talking about.
How's his camera quit?
One of the, oh, didn't. All right, so I don't have a whole, whole lot for us. We talked about most of the things that I wanted to cover, talking about the easement, the Georgia Power easement. The public works position is out there, if anybody knows of anyone that would make a good public works employee, part-time, twenty hours a week, flexible scheduling, great place to work, good crew.
I might know of somebody, I'm going to reach out to them.
Definitely. One of the things that I will be bringing to council, I would really like to have it before February, but it's time to start working on signage. I want to get signs directing people to downtown Sharpsburg, I want to get signs directing people to uptown Sharpsburg, I want to have Welcome to Sharpsburg signs at each of our gateway entrances. So what I'm going to be doing is I will be coming to you with some proposals, I have gotten some rough price estimates, I can get a four-by-eight sheet of signage material, I think for about six hundred dollars, through a local vendor here in Noonan. Now, that's not going to count the mounting or how we're going to put it up, but hopefully we can find some nonprofits that have some construction experience that can help us install the signage. But I do want to come to you guys with some signage, and it's going to be gateway signage, it's going to be directional to downtown, and that's probably one of the biggest things that I want to try to bring in February. I am having a meeting with the county next week, or I'm sorry, later this week, to talk about the schedule for the back parking lot. We are on schedule to start in January, I just don't have a firm date yet, hopefully I'll have that this week. Once that happens, I can give you guys better information around who, what, when, where, and how. And that's, that's pretty much it. Brad, is there anything else that you're aware of or?
No.
Anything? All right, so with the new, does anybody have any questions about any things that we've talked about? All right, there being, all new business being concluded, all old business being settled with no other minutes or updates, I will ask for adjournment.
Motion.
Stan has the first.
Second.
Alex has the second, all in favor? Unanimous? Meeting is adjourned.